To everyone who's here. Item one, to receive and accept apologies for absence. Keith Gilbert, Catherine Stalard, Tina Cruz and Keith Prince. Yeah, can we take them separately as we've been doing? So the first one was, sorry, Keith. Keith Gilbert, is everyone happy? Keith, Keith Prince has just got out of hospital as far as I know, had an operation today. Um, Tina Cruz, I haven't heard, but I just kind of, yeah, Tina Cruz. Um, Catherine's not very well, um, and Keith, no. Other than he given his apologies. So Keith Gilbert, are we happy to accept his apologies? All those in favour? Tina Cruz? Keith Prince? Okay, noted. And who's, who's the other one? And Catherine, you happy to accept apologies? Yes, Tina?
And I just, this is new to me that we're now going through this system of Gavin to give excuses. I've never heard of that before. Um, but I just want to know why mine weren't accepted last time when everyone here knows that I'm going through a major family crisis. Um, and I had explained to you at the chair, my difficult situation at the moment.
I wasn't here last.
No, I understand that too. Um, I just wanted to know why they weren't accepted.
The problem that we have, Tina, is we as councillors are all voted in to do things for the Watten community. And if we're not coming to the, um, meetings and we're not contributing to any of the things that we actually do as a, as a council, we have to then start looking and saying, well, why are you a councillor? Not just yourself, but anybody. Um, I did bring this up in my report two, three times, three ago. Yeah, um, it's very difficult. But obviously, looking at different attendances over this last year, yours has been that you've attended five meetings.
My dad died and I was caring for him, so I think publicly I need to put that out there that this is not, um, this is unfair, this is family stuff. And as everyone in this room says, family come first. And I do think on this one occasion, when you all know that I do still work for Watten and I've had to prioritise my work, but I am still working for Watten. I just want to put that out there and I'm very upset by that.
Yes, Stan?
Yeah?
Okay.
I'm not able to give you an exact reason why I couldn't get here because it's personal and it's police driven. That is all I am going to say on the matter. But I suffice, suffice to say, I am not in a position to give the exact reason. And I would ask council to respect my silence on that. I gave a reason. Incidentally, I couldn't get off the drive, but push comes to shove, I'd have walked. But in this instance, I couldn't come for a very personal police reason.
Moving on to item two, to note declaration of members' personal prejudicial and disclosable pecuniary interests in respect of items on the agenda. Anyone? Nope. Item three, minutes, to confirm that the minutes of the meeting held on December the 13th, 2022 are a true and accurate record. Has everybody read them? Yes, Jane? Okay.
Yes, I suppose I should.
Item 3.2, to receive reports on items from the last minutes not already on the agenda. Anything on there? Anything we might want to mention is about the coronation.
Chair, through you, um, I'm trying to find the thing about the coronation. Um, can I suggest that we ask Sue Dent to have talks with Toby and the Sports Centre about doing something joint for the coronation at the Sports Centre? Because Bradlands are offering large screens, I understand. It seems the most appropriate place to have a large screen is down there. So could we agree that we ask Sue to do some exploratory talks about how we can work together for something for the coronation?
Yes, Bill. All those in favour of asking Sue and Toby to? There go Toby. Okay. So is that the only thing from there? Okay. Item four, reports. 4.1 Chairman's Report, which is a very short one for today. On the 17th of December, I opened the Nativity Display at the Watten Methodist Centre, which was really interesting. That's the second year that I've been and seen that. Next year, if they put them up, it's well worth seeing all the little nativities that they've got from all over the world. And then on the 7th of Jan, Stan and myself attended the Watten Twinning Association New Year's function where they're discussing about going to visa this year. I think we'll leave it for now. And that's all on my report. Thank you. 4.2 Vice Chairman's Report.
Chair, on the 15th of December, I attended a Finance Committee meeting. And on the, find the date, the 5th of January, I attended a meeting at the Charlotte Harvey about the food hub.
Is that progress?
The, uh, just to update you, the floor is, the flooring is now down. Took a bit of time because of where the hole in the floor was. Took a long time to dry out, but anyway. Um, the flooring has now been laid, proper flooring has been laid. And today Colin Scott collected the shelving and that was going up this afternoon and probably tomorrow morning. So hopefully it shouldn't be more than about another three, four weeks and we should be able to open.
Good. Okay. 4.3 Deputy Clark's Report.
Other than what was in your packs, it's been quite, quite a time due to Christmas, so I didn't have anything to report on. Um, just verbally, um, the High Street lamp posts are being painted finally. Um, between the 17th of January and the end of January, I'm not sure when. It's worth updating on. Um, other than that, nothing, it's a very quiet time.
Okay. Pat?
The lights are down?
Yeah.
No, they came and took them down last week.
The only one they struggled with was the one on here because of the scaffolding next door. They can't paint it. But yeah, they've all gone down, so they can just come and paint them a nice pink or whatever colour they've got in their warehouses. Um, sorry, Stan?
Yeah, under this heading, Madam Chair, Deputy Clark's Report. Um, could we ask, without disclosing any confidentiality, for an update on the, um, the Clark's welfare?
You might report on that, Chair of HR. I've been in touch with the clerk. She's going back to see the doctor at the end of this week. She'll update me on where things are. Uh, I have recommended, no secret, we're, we're members of the wellbeing group. So she's taking advantage of that as well. And when we know, when she's to be signed back to work, I will let her know.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could we ask council to pass on our well wishes?
Anything else on the reports?
I wasn't sure if it was worth mentioning, but Don brought in an article, um, in the paper the other day. I did forward it around to everyone. And we haven't had any confirmation of it at all, but, um, there's government funding that's been allocated to Norfolk County Council to encourage active travel. Um, there is a grant that is being, um, used to develop a countrywide local cycling and walking infrastructure plan. Um, and it is in the pipeline that Watten could be part of that. Um, but yeah, this is just out of paper, so I had, I've had nothing else, but I thought it was worth mentioning.
Yes, Jane?
Just wanted to back up on that. There's another, if you look at the grants funding, there's a 32 million available from central government for cycleways and walkways. Um, I don't know if you all know that the lot got, uh, 30,000 pounds to do the walkways around the back of the lock. The agreement with us and Breckland was that we wouldn't do anything that might interfere with any larger band, ideas that came out of the future Breckland plan. But both of those issues could be related to the future Breckland plan for funding for the footpath to Swaffham, which might come to the lock. So that's a positive sign for the future and it does say that Watten's included on the list.
Okay, lovely. Yes, Don?
Not only does it say Watten, but it says Swaffham as well. So I think, I think you put two and two together correctly. I think that's what it would be, you know? I know, I know they were, they were doing some exploratory work, a feasibility study. So I think that's been completed and then that's going to move on from there. Yeah, fingers crossed.
So is that something that Breckland will oversee? Or should we be asking Sue to start looking at?
It wouldn't hurt for Sue to inquire where the situation's at. But it, there's a plan, there's, uh, it's a section in that future Breckland plan that they made, which they'll be helping out with projects. So, yeah, it wouldn't hurt for Sue to sort of put some feelers out to see what's happening.
Can I, can I just add to that? I, I think that the one they did in sort of like North Norfolk, which was similar to this, it was Norfolk County Council that were the lead on it, sort of. And, and their engineers were all involved and what have you. But they, they sort of took advice and got support from town councils, parish councils and district councils as well.
Thank you, Don. Item five, public participation. The members of public, would you just say anything? This, hello? What's his name? Okay, item 12, thank you. And did you want to say anything at all, Roger? Oh, partnership, okay. All right, thank you. Um, item six, to receive draft minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on the 15th of December. Has everybody had opportunity to see those? Is everybody happy with what's on there? Thank you. Yeah. Item 6.1 from the Finance Committee, to consider recommendation from the Finance Committee meeting held on the 15th of December, 2022, that the preset request for 2324 should be for £408,805. This would be based on a budget requirement of £460,005, offset by the use of 12,000 from reserves and a predicted income of 39,200. With a tax base of 2883.4, the preset request would result in a band D, sorry, in a, in a band D charge of £141.78. This is an increase on 2223 of £2.50 or 1.79%. The preset itself increase would show a 4.37 increase. Um, I know I didn't attend the last finance meeting, but before, the one before that, we were looking at how we could justify and how to work it out. And I would imagine on this last one, you've gone into great depth. And I would like to pass on thanks to Catherine because no doubt she's the lady that's been sat there working all these figures out. Has anyone got any comments on what we're going to request? Yes, Don?
Could I have it put on, on record that Jane did masses of work in advance of the, of the last meeting? So basically, all the work was done, we went through it and tied up a few minor points, but, but it was all the work that Jane did and I'm sure Catherine did as well. So if that could be put on record, that would be good.
Can I ask all those in, sorry?
No, I, I, yeah, I was just going to say, if we approve it, can we make certain that in the next newsletter, we highlight how much the band D has gone up by? Because when Breckland put it out, it won't look like that, it never does. Um, so we need to be clear to the members of the public, it's gone up by the minimum amount we can put it up. We, we couldn't afford not to put it up, that's the problem.
Can I ask all those in favour agreeing for the increase? Item seven, to ratify payment of £7,440 to Titanium Fireworks. Now, Michelle did ring me up before the end of the year saying that the invoice had come in from there, but because it was mid-finance meetings, we agreed that it was a bill that we knew was coming. So Catherine and myself said yes to paying it, but obviously we need approval from the council. Otherwise I'll have to go and get a personal loan and pay it. So all those in favour of the payment for £7,440 for Titanium? Again, that's passed, thank you. Item eight, to consider donation application received from Whalen Partnership Development. Hopefully you've all had chance to have a look at that. And did you want to talk on?
Good evening, Roger Harold. I've been trustee of Whalen Partnership for over 20 years. And in the last three, like a lot of other organisations, we have struggled considerably. Um, the situation was exacerbated by the failure of one of the boilers nearly four years ago now, so we carried on limping along on one boiler. And, um, we obviously struggled to actually get finances together to actually, uh, get a replacement. Um, that has now been carried out in fact, it's no mean feat because, uh, the order was placed in June of 2021 and some of the Brexit issues, um, compounded the problem of actually getting the equipment into this country. It was a Vaisman boiler system, which was, uh, best available for the situation that we've got. We have already had a donation from you, um, towards that boiler when the actual estimate was about 15,000. Unfortunately, during the actual installation process in, um, back end of September, beginning of October, it was discovered that there was asbestos in the old building, which I suppose is not a big surprise, bearing in mind that the building was erected around about the 50s and the boiler system that was put in at the time properly used copious amounts of asbestos, which obviously was still there because, um, the survey, which we then had to conduct before the work could actually commence, demonstrated there was brown asbestos in various parts of the actual, um, boiler house and put the whole actual installation in jeopardy. Um, that is one of the things that's caused the actual cost to overrun the original estimate by about £4,000. Uh, having done a full, um, asbestos survey, um, we had to rethink the way the boilers could be erected to minimise the amount of uh, holes that were drilled in the structure of the building generating dust, which would create a, an asbestos problem. And obviously some of the actual issues of how those boilers were actually put in, um, was impacted. And the ultimate overrun was, um, just over £4,000, including the cost of the, uh, survey. So, um, one of the things that we, uh, would like you to consider is to help us to offset this overrun because life has been extremely difficult over the last three years and we are now beginning to emerge. And, uh, one of the things that we're very conscious of was keeping the police in the, in the, the actual town. Um, all the actual work was done with, um, uh, conversations with the police to make sure that nobody was disrupted. The principle was that we were going to try and get this done during the summer months, obviously, but because of the asbestos business, it created, excuse me, a situation which, um, brought us dangerously close to the period when we needed the heating most. So we would welcome your, um, support in this particular, uh, problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Stan and then Pat?
I'd love to speak to council on this. Um, I feel a little uncomfortable because I'd love to be supporting that application. Uh, a couple of things could be difficult to do so. The first is that I'm up there having a round of constitution and that we have given a donation for something that hasn't been completed. The end of that, the more we do to chose the world that's, uh, listed, that's all it is. And that's the first thing. Um, secondly, looking at the accounts. Um, the importance of asking for the 3rd of March last weekend, we had three reserves, 12,000 pounds. And the challenges we have, speaking in the city of its own, which are 13,600 pounds. Cash and bank, cash and bank, we had 32,000 on the net. Which are 42,600, which is 70,000. Net assets, 323,000, maybe 30,000.
Well, the situation is that, um, uh, under our constitution, our reserve, um, we, uh, supposed to be keeping that at 24,000. We've had to eat into that. We also act for, um, as bankers for the organisation, which is front and back. Um, Katie Powell, looking after the, um, people who have, um, serious, um, mental problems and so forth. Um, so while the account appears to be, um, very healthy, in actual fact, it's a culmination of a variety of issues. Um, and the gallery is another separate cost centre effectively, which we are struggling to, um, keep as a cultural facility within the town.
Yeah, thank you. Um, the problem that then presents me is you're saying you have to keep your reserves at 24,000 at all times. But isn't this exactly the circumstance that you would have reserves for? So that's all I've got to say, Madam Chair. But thank you.
Um, Pat, you have a question?
Um, Stan has, uh, covered most of what I was going to ask you, but can I ask, has the boiler now been completed? Is, is it all in? And?
It's completed.
Um, has the asbestos gone? But is it still on site?
Yeah. One of the things that we've got to consider, as you will appreciate, we've gone for this grant in conjunction with yourselves to actually, um, under levelling up grant, to actually level the building completely. And we obviously can't wait to see whether that is going to happen. But if it does happen, we would need the asbestos survey before any demolition starts to work. Uh, otherwise, again, the whole project would be, um, kicked into the long grass.
Well, I won't labour the point, but, um, I'm more than surprised, shocked in fact, that you have chosen to not remove the asbestos and not double bag it and have it done by specialists because?
...
Can I just ask, have you, because you're Weyland Partnership, have you applied to any of the other parishes or towns within Weyland for any assistance?
The policy is one of to try and encourage all the member parishes to actually contribute towards the actual basic operation of the partnership. Some have actually dropped by the wayside. We do encourage them to actually contribute. Going back to Jan Godfrey's original objective, the objective was to try and get a pound per person per year for each of the actual partners. And that's still an objective, but it's difficult because as various parishes, their representative change or their parish councils change, we lose people. And they elect in some instances not to contribute, although they still want to enjoy the benefits of the partnership. So it's an ongoing struggle.
So in answer, you haven't actually applied to any of the other parishes?
We have got money coming in. I mean, my own parish, I live in Samtoney. I've been there for thirty-four years. And they contribute annually four hundred pounds to the actual partnership. And other parishes do contribute, but some of the small parishes either don't contribute or contribute a small amount.
Okay. And again, reiterating what Pat said, I'm very reluctant if there's asbestos involved, that we could be potentially putting money into something that health and safety would then just pull out anyway. And the fact that we've contributed once for the boiler, we've contributed to the knocking down of the building that you're wanting to put this bill boiler into. I sort of, I can't in my mind justify why we would go down the route of giving you another four thousand when what in itself we are struggling, we need new things for the boiler. We've also got our own charitable trust that we have to maintain. But I will throw it obviously out through to the floor. Now Tina, you had, and then Toby.
Yeah, I just want to know, when do you find out about the levelling up fund that you've applied for? For the project that could come off?
It should have been at the end of November, but because of all the actual upheaval within the government, it's been postponed. So we don't know quite when that's going to happen, if at all now.
Has the application gone in for it?
Oh yeah, definitely.
Toby.
Thank you very much for coming. Again, I understand your position in trying to raise funds to try and deliver a project. But I think looking at the entirety, especially your bank balance and looking at what you've got, this is the for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty twenty-one, is that correct, to March twenty-one? What is your, first of all, to be able to understand the kind of support if I were to kind of vote to say to get, I'd like to understand what your current position is end of March twenty-two. What is your current balance? Is that something you can give off? Okay. And another thing I wanted to be clear on, which I think, I think Madame Chairman asked, which you didn't quite, that wasn't quite clear to me, is I think she asked whether you had requests for grants from any other parties. I don't think you quite clarified that for us.
We have applied, we do apply for grants from all over the place.
Yeah, for this project, I mean.
Specifically, we haven't found a funder who would give us any funding for this particular type of thing. We have tried a variety of actually funding sources without success. Thank you.
Has anyone got any other questions? Yes, Pat?
Has the bill for the boiler been paid at this point?
Yes.
Thank you.
Petrospective.
We had a problem because there was a penalty clause attached to the actual payment period. So when we got the final account, which was the end of December, we had to pay out within three days.
Yes, I understand what Stan's saying. I haven't got the grants regulations in front of me. The clerk might do, but I don't know how long it'll take her to find them. Can I suggest that we defer the decision? That the clerk circulates us again with the grant applications regulations so we can look at it, because if it is a valid comment, then there's little we can do about it. But then at least, I don't want to make a decision now without knowing the real fact. I'm not saying you haven't given the facts, I'm sorry. The facts that we have to work under. So can I propose that we defer this to the next meeting?
Yeah, I think that would be.
Okay, thank you.
While we're on the points, not the point of their boiler, the point of our boiler, which you will know didn't work over Christmas. Because when we had the Legionnaires' check, they disconnected one of the pipes and the boiler wouldn't work again. But could I suggest we refer the item on our boiler to the Finance Committee to have a meeting with the museum? Because there are all issues to do with their pipe work up here and our pipe work and the two don't match. I'm sorry to slip that in, but I mean, otherwise, you know what's going to happen? That we're going to be back in a month's time saying the heating system has broken down again. I didn't say that.
Can I propose then that we postpone this until the next meeting, awaiting further information on our constitution and on how our donations work? Yes, Pat? Take a second. All right. All those in favour? Yeah, that's carried. So we'll take it forward to the next ones that we can.
Thanks, Your Excellency. And you'll let us know the information we asked for?
Yes.
Lovely, thank you.
Thank you.
If you can let us have it so the clerk can circulate it before our next meeting?
Yeah.
That would be very helpful, do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for coming for the time. Item nine, to consider support for the proposed changes to the speed limit along Aircraft Drive and Pingu Road in Wotton. Yes, Beryl?
We don't have a choice.
No, we don't have a choice. All those in favour? Yeah. Item ten, to consider request for supply of litter bin on Norwich Road. Yes, Peter?
Deputy clerk, remind us who asked for a bin? The only reason I say that, we can supply any bin, that's not a problem. Sue's going to empty it. And that will put our costs up, unfortunately, because we'll have to do a new contract with Serco.
Where? That's a hundred. Opposite the entrance of Lennon Way. Yes, Tina?
I walk the dog along that particular stretch and it does get very literary, I must admit, because it is a long way between the bin that we've got near Lovell Gardens Play Park down towards the town. There's not many bins along there. So, well, there isn't any bins along that stretch. So I think the next one would possibly be around where Dusens is. Around that area where the T-bar is. That is about the only one next down. So I would be for it because it does get a bit tatty along there.
My concern is if we put a bin on that pavement, are we going to obstruct? Like wheelchairs and buckets, I can't think because it's not particularly, is it just two slabs wide? Yes, Beryl?
I just think this can open up a can of worms, because quite honestly, there's a lot of litter along the side of the roads in Wotton. Particularly, we get it at ours, children going to school, sweet wrappers, crisp packets.
Yes, Jane. Yes, Jane.
I would say that this bit previous, this coming on the agenda, we haven't actually got an exact location that we're looking at, type of bin we'd be considering, the cost that it would incur, any knock-on issues before it actually came. It's not really a proposal, it's just a vague idea. And I don't think it's really appropriate to have actually come to committee at this stage.
Yes, Tina?
Can I suggest we get, I'll see Deputy clerk to go away and get some pricing and ask our handyman if she can go and have a look to see how wide the part bit of pavement is and to come back with what her recommendations would be and with the price of how much a bin would be. And also how much Serco we're going to charge extra to empty that bin. Then we've got a good clear picture to give a decision on. That's my proposal.
Yes, Michelle.
Can I just say, we do have a litter bin in the unit that could be used.
Okay, so if we defer that until we've got that information? Yeah? Everyone happy with that? Item eleven, to consider request for a grit bin on Dy road Signals Estate.
Chair, through you. Can we ask who requested that? Got that one? Yeah. Because it won't provide anymore.
Going to say, I did, I can't remember where I was when we had that last icy spell. And I don't know how true this is, but they told me that legislation had changed in that if you put grit down, you're liable for a sue because you might not have put it in that inch there where you fell over. So the blame is then put onto whoever spread the grit, that they may not then have put it in the right place. So in other words, it's going to put sadly work onto the NHS because people are going to fall and break hips in the ice because now we're not allowed to put grit down.
Chair.
But the bottom line is that's what I've heard.
What Stan says is correct. I mean, they say you can move one of your own grit bins at the moment if you want to. And we have a number, but I have to point out, and I think it's worth publicly knowing, it's not, those bins are for the public to use, not for the town council use. Because there was a lot of complaints, why isn't the town council gritting the pavement when it was slippery? Well, that's not the town council's responsibility, I'm afraid. So I go back and ask, who wants a grit bin on Dy road? Who asked for it?
Just a resident.
Resident. Well, I think the answer is, I'm sorry, write to Norfolk County Council and ask them to provide one. We know what the answer's going to be. They'll say, yeah, we'll provide one, but we're not filling it up. And the town council can fill it up, so you know. Well, I think that might be a very good idea, Stan. I don't know, I haven't seen her for years.
Yes, Toby? So if we can advise them that it's Norfolk County Council?
And to contact our county councillor.
Item twelve, to consider appointing a second councillor to represent the town council on the local reclaim the rain local project group. Come on, Liz.
Do members need me to say more about the reclaim the rain? Or I did write things in the report that you hope you had, but I'm happy to answer any question.
I guess I'm going to ask, is anybody interested in joining Liz on the reclaim the rain? Gilbert?
Why do you need another one? Is that I'm being rude or is that? Why do you need another councillor?
I mean, the group at the moment, Keith in a way partly was there as part of the flood action group. Okay, he represents the council on that. This local group will meet every so often. We're part of the driving things forward and getting action. And it just seemed, if there might be an occasion when Keith couldn't be there, that there was somebody else. Not necessarily each person have to be there every time, but between the two councillors, that at least one person be there. I think the meetings, I mean, we're hoping to have one towards the end of January. The next one is just decided when there's business that it's relevant to, for that group to be doing. I mean, just to reiterate, it consists at the moment of two local farmers, the head of the junior school, Weyland Academy want to be involved. Three people who've been flooded, a member of the Rotary Club. And it's, you know, it's, it was a very good meeting that we had in November. And everybody agreed to be on the group and trying to move things forward.
So are you looking for another councillor full-time or one that would deputise if Keith isn't available?
It would be nice to have one full-time, but if deputising is the way to go to get someone, I'll live with that.
Is there anybody that would be happy to do that?
Just to say, the meetings will always be in the evening. The last one was six thirty to eight thirty in the evening.
And how often do you have the meetings?
As I say, they're more ad hoc depending on the business. I mean, we're in such an early stage at the moment. That was the first one. The next meeting will talk about all the ideas that the group have had about how to contact the community and work with the community. The whole community has to be involved in this project. And of course, that's very difficult to do. So ideas have ranged from having a stall on market day and promoting it, having somebody go to Tesco's and be in the foyer there, up to a big event in the Queen's Hall where we have some speaker or some person present who might draw people to come.
Sorry, yes, Tina?
I'd like to say I would be happy to do it and work with you, Liz. But at the moment, with all the difficult things we've got going on, I can't commit to every single meeting because of one thing and another, but things will settle down eventually and I would be able to give you more time. So if you would be happy with that tentative footstep, that's up to council, but I'm happy to do that if, if you want me. But it would be a bit of a hit and miss at the moment.
Tina, sorry, can I, through you? At the moment then, would you be willing to fill in if Keith couldn't go?
Yes, Stan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Liz, as you appreciate, everything's been hectic for many people and your boundless energy on this always shows and amazes me. But my question to you tonight is a very simple one. Have we the council given you anything towards publicising this and getting, getting people's attention? I.e. something towards advertising to draw the public out?
Don't worry, Stan, if I'm on there, I'll be putting in an application.
Yeah, but we also want the public to be participating. So that's my question. Have we given you like five hundred pound or something to try and draw recruits?
You haven't because we haven't asked and the whole point is this, uh, project has funding. And it's up to the project manager at the county council to come up with the funds and whatever we decide about, as I understand it.
Chair, can I propose through you that we accept Tina's kind offer and that temporarily she acts as a substitute for Keith?
Those in favour?
She doesn't look like him, but she can act as a substitute.
Thank you. Item thirteen. To agree in principle to the building of the attenuation features at the two areas of open space which the town council is responsible for at Shire Horse Development. But the cost benefit analysis currently being undertaken by WSP is on the positive side and the building can go ahead. A map of the area and what is proposed will be circulated at the meeting. So everybody had a chance to look.
I mean, Chair, perhaps if I, I say when, since that, um, report was written and, um, uh, the proposal made, I have an update in that the county council flood officer told me that WSP are way behind in their work and they've had to give them a deadline of the end of the year to come up with this. So this isn't urgent on the one hand. Secondly, the flood officer at the county who really knows his stuff and understands this very well would be very willing to come and meet with councillors. And as there's also one for the Charlotte Harvey Trust, I did wonder whether a few councillors might meet with him and then they could say even more relevant information to you all than I can. He would come at a particular time that you as a group, um, and the Charlotte Harvey Trust, if we did them both together. He would come to a meeting during the day and talk you through both of them.
Chair, if Liz is saying that they've got till the end of the year to do things, not the end of the financial year, I mean. Oh, is it? Okay. Oh, well, in that case, it's slightly different because I was going to say there might be a new council by the end of the year. Well, I think if Liz can liaise with the deputy clerk or the clerk. Uh, we can probably get, uh, two meetings together, one for the trustees perhaps and one for the councillors. Or a combined meeting to look at some of proposals. And I would suggest that be done sometime in, um, February or March, whichever is easiest for them. Well, it depends what the end of their financial year is.
No, the, I mean, the, the decision that WSP will give us is, is the cost benefit analysis on the positive side of the benefit.
Well, February sometime.
I'm preparing myself and none of them will be.
Yeah, well.
Everyone in agreement? Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Just as a, an add-on to that, looking at all this on Shire Horse Way. I don't know if you've all had a chance to read the Burkitts report for Hares Green, which on the side of the line. Okay, I'll save what I was going to say till later. Um, over to you, Jane. Item fourteen, planning.
Thank you. It looks worse than it is. It looks like a very long list, but it should be quick. Fourteen point one, three PL twenty twenty-two, one three nine one F. Erection of a ground-mounted photo volatile, photo volatile array. I've been practising that all day and I still got it wrong. And associated works, Granzwick Food Rounden Road. Now, they did send us a landscaping scheme to show you what it was going to do around this. Um, I've got no comments. Has anybody got anything they want to raise? No, I think there's no problem. Fourteen point two, three PL twenty twenty-two, one three five one F. Opening to be formed in a party war between thirty-three and thirty-five High Street. That's previously Amy's and Myhale's amended plans. I've got no comments to make. Okay, don't, thank you. Fourteen point three, three PL twenty twenty-two, one three seven five F. Construction of a funeral premises with new garage and access land off Thetford Road. This is the land next to the Tesco entrance, which is in front of the Jubilee Gardens and the allotments. Um, there are no major planning objections in relation to the use, but I did pick up that I thought there might be, um, traffic issues. So I don't know if that's something that you want to look at.
I wondered that because the, the entrance, I know they're not going to have more to people going in and out, but it's still going to be at that junction where you're coming out of Tesco, you've then got that. Or are they going to try and loop into Tesco's and then into their, I don't know.
See, I don't know. It's an awkward one because the site's going to be developed for something. Um, if it's houses, people are going to come in and out, but I don't, that was the only thing I could see might be a problem. Beryl then, Tina?
Oh, yes, it has now. Um, the entrance, I think, is going to be quite wide looking at the plans and it gives enough room for the limousines and purses to go in and then turn around and come back to the garages and for the hearse to go to the back of the building. When they've obviously got somebody in. But I personally haven't got anything against it because I think A-list will do a brilliant job there. But it does concern me, the limos and the hearse coming out onto the road because that road is so busy at times. But that's my only concern. Tina?
Yeah, I've got no concerns on this at all because as, looking at the plans, the road, as Beryl said, is very wide and it's further down and it could just be another entrance into houses. And if there was houses there, there would be a lot more traffic, I think, in and out, in and out, because they'd have put a few on there. This, having dealt with A-list recently, trust me, she doesn't have that many going in and out and they don't say it a lot. Um, you know, and it, it really isn't, you know, it'd be one person visiting at a time. It's not, it's not like a supermarket in and out, you know, it's quite quiet.
Yeah, thank. There's an alternative view for, um, Beryl's comment, can understand what you're saying, Beryl. However, if you think about the times of funerals, are the limos and the hearse is going to be coming in and out at peak periods of the day? Probably not. No. I, I would, sorry, I overspoke you there. I would have thought if there's going to be any objection over traffic there, it would be the private ambulances coming in and out of hours, which again, I'm pretty sure would be discreet and no different to Tesco's having a delivery.
Chair, I, I don't have a problem with the concept at all. Um, I think the only thing is, we all know, if you drive up and down there, when the lorries come to deliver to Tesco's, they shut the whole of that road up. So the lorries can go up, reverse and go in and then come out again. Now, I, I would think, I would hope that the planning would look at that and see if there was some way of solving that problem because sort of what I was saying, yeah, there's only going to be the occasional vehicle going in. The last thing you want on earth is to be going to a funeral and, and the hearse to come out and not be able to get out because Tesco's have got three lorries all queuing up to deliver stuff to Tesco's. So I, I think in principle, no problem. It's just they need to look at how they can control the traffic there.
Okay, well, I suggest, I worded that we don't have any objection in principle, but we would ask the planning officer to look at possible conflict with deliveries at Tesco site close by. Would that be okay for everyone?
I mean, can I come back on that? I looked at the plans and I saw it that the driveway access was virtually opposite Beryl's and not in the Tesco thing. It's actually on the Thetford Road. So the access in Egress would be on the actual Thetford Road, not?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but that causes, usually causes, if it gets a blockage on the Tesco site, then that means people coming into town can't get into Tesco's. So that starts to cause a blockage. So just, just like flag it up for them to examine, but not, not be an actual objection. Yep. Then we go to fourteen point four, three PL twenty twenty-two, one three eight zero A. Non-illuminated advertising totem board Juson's Norwich Road. It's right inside the site. It's just a singular pole, a totem pole. I can't see any problems. Has anybody got any problems? No. Then we go on to fourteen point five, three PL twenty twenty-two, one three eight zero A. Construction of an outbuilding certificate of lawful use proposed at St Mary's Close. You may remember this site, it's been drawn to our attention before. There was an existing enforcement issue in relation to it.
Jane, when I went on to have a look at this this afternoon, it said this one had been withdrawn on the actual application plans.
I, I managed to see the plans and everything.
Well, I saw the plans, but it said at the very start of it, application withdrawn.
Are you sure it was the same one? Because the previous one was withdrawn.
Oh, perhaps that's what I read then. Okay. I'll take that back then.
No, you could be right. I mean, I didn't see that when I looked at it. Um, the only thing being, if we, if it isn't withdrawn.
We don't do something.
We don't comment. So what I suggest we do, we
Comment.
Decide on a comment and then the clerk can check whether it's withdrawn or not. And we put it in on not accordingly. Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Because it seemed open to me because there's another application coming after this on the same site. So, um, there are two ways of doing a certificate of lawful use. One is immunity from any action of a use by the, or building by the passage of time, usually called grandfather's rights. This one is where you actually put an application in to see whether planning permission is required for the use. Now, this is definitely that one. And my view is that if it was a legitimate building going up for residential use, it would then be ancillary to the occupation of a dwelling house and wouldn't need planning permission. However, because there is a problem with the change of use on the site, then it's a double use, it's a mixed use and therefore the ancillary use wouldn't apply. So unless they've resolved that, I don't think in law they can grant it. That's the only thing I was going to say to them, should they wish to look at it as a, you know, an application. Does that make sense to anybody? It has been withdrawn. Okay, so we don't have to worry about that. Um, and then we go on to fourteen point six, three PL twenty twenty-two, zero zero four six PNE, prior approval to erect a single store of rear extensions, Mary's Close. Um, I mean, I didn't see any problems with this. The previous application they had was a very large building that almost went wall to wall there, didn't it? And that they definitely withdrew. Um, it's quite tall, but it is a big site and I don't see any problems with that as a planning application. Anybody got any comments they want to make? Fourteen point seven, TRE twenty twenty-two, zero three two zero. Uh, TLA, application to remove tree originally noted for retention on previous application. Barclays fifty-six High Street, that's the land at the rear where they were. This is simply a notification, it's already been approved on the third of January. So comments would be pointless at this stage anyway. Fourteen point eight, thirty B, twenty twenty-two, zero zero six five O B. Application discharge passes one point two, one point three and one point five of the section one oh six agreement from August twenty twenty-one relating to three PL twenty twenty-one, zero zero three two F. That's land north of Norwich Road, Rockles Green. That's the Abel's housing behind Liddles. I couldn't actually find a copy of the one oh six because it wouldn't let me look at it. But I think it's housing, landscaping and contributions to Norfolk County Council. So I don't think they're relevant to us anyway, they're office decision. Yeah.
We said no, that we wouldn't take anything off, we did off the one.
Yes, yeah. So that's not a problem for us. So I've just got no comment on that one. Uh, fourteen point three, have we done that one, haven't we, Travis? Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Jane.
Done them all? Yes. That is the lot. Did that one, didn't I? Yep.
That it's already been approved, yeah. Okay, so item fifteen, to pass a resolution to exclude the press and public to consider legal matters. Anyone in agree? Can we just turn the telly off?